Please be seated. I'd like to call this inaugural meeting of the 2022-2026 term of Stratford City Council's Order. I will now invite the manager of Diversity, Equity and Indigenous Initiatives forward to give the land acknowledgement.
Skanow, which means greeting or hello in Cayuga, which is an indigenous language that is spoken on six nations of the Grand River First Nation. Prior to the land acknowledgement, a typical Haudes' shonin' cultural practice is to have an indigenous person do an opening address to bring our minds together. As we build toward a comprehensive land acknowledgement, we hope this will be part of it. We acknowledge that Stratford is positioned on the land that was shared between the Nutro, Arishna'awam, Anishnabe and Haudes' shonin's people. It is also important to acknowledge that the municipal buildings are on the territory governed by two important treaties: the Dish with One Spoon/Wampum Belt Covenant of 1701 and the Treaty of 1827, the Huron Tract, which was an agreement made between eighteen Anishnabe chiefs and the Canada Company. This land is still home to many indigenous people from across Turtle Island, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to live, work and play on this land. We acknowledge that this statement is only a small step towards reconciliation. True reconciliation requires constant reflection and collaborative engagement with indigenous peoples. As settlers and uninvited guests, we continue to benefit from colonization and the colonial policies. The colonial violence that this country was built on has had persistent impacts on the social, economic, political and cultural wellbeing of indigenous people for generations. True reconciliation will require systemic change that allows for indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As municipal workers, we have the responsibility to honour the thriving communities and cultures that were governance processes that guide how indigenous people live today. We have a responsibility to allow for space for traditional knowledge and philosophies of indigenous people with whom we share this land to inform how we operate at the city of Stratford. This land acknowledgement is a reminder for us to actively and continually engage with indigenous peoples to learn about the history and stewardship of the land. We are committed to honouring the indigenous caretakers who came before us and are continuing to work toward building respectful relationships with indigenous people. This statement will require consistent engagement with indigenous elders, knowledge keepers and other indigenous communities before it is ready for wide use. In addition, this statement is part of a larger equity and indigenous action plan that hopes to move the corporation toward an equitable and accessible environment for all equity-deserving communities. This land acknowledgement is the start of ongoing work, and a formal report will follow at a later council meeting that will prompt a discussion about how we can meaningfully engage with the land acknowledgement. Onikiwaf, which means goodbye in Cayuga.
Thank you. Please welcome Mayor-elect Martin Ritzma to begin introductions of council-elect.
You better give me a lot of those tonight so I can keep a little bit of a break here. So, welcome to this inaugural council meeting. We are grateful to be here tonight and to be joined with special guests, staff, family members and friends. I am Mayor-elect Martin Ritzma, and I'm happy to welcome my guests. This'll be the easiest part of the evening. Father David Butler, pastor of St Joseph Catholic Church. My brother-in-law Gene Kelly. My brother-in-law Brian Nickel. Looks like a guy's night out. I noticed a nephew Derek Ritzma as I came in. Cousin John and Luanne Kelly. My brother Ben Ritzma. Via a little bit of FaceTime through my wife, my son Benjamin and his wife Lindsay from Kingston, with their daughters Frances Rose and Marion Claire. And my daughter and her husband Cal from Aurora with Ava Elizabeth and Lucy Alina. And also my bride Catherine Ritzma. At this time, I would like to welcome the members of the 2022-2026 Term of Council, and I'm going to ask each member to introduce their family and friends that are in attendance this evening. Mr. Foll? And I'll start with Mr. Counselor-elect Beatty.
Good evening. Testing, testing, one, two, three. That's a little bit better. Good evening, everyone. We measure time in different increments. Sometimes it's days, weeks, months. Sometimes you measure them in election cycles. I am very fortunate that I have my family here today. And when I look at election cycles, my first election, my boys were four. And they struggled, but they loved the moment of putting that first election sign in. One on either side, pushing down frantically to get that sign in. And I knew that they were learning all about what it was to be part of our city, running an election, putting that sign in. Here I am now. My boys are twenty. This year, when I set any signs out, they simply hopped in the car and off they went. But a different election cycle's me. I am fortunate to be joined by my family, who walked that journey with me. I'm proud to have with me my family Guy Chadzie, my in-laws Barry and Nancy Schmidt, my mom Mike, my mom and my pama suit, my son Brayden. My other son is not able to join us by Zoom or Skype. That would've been a brilliant idea, but he's over in the UK studying abroad this term, so he's not able to join us. And my beautiful wife, who I owe much to. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor-elect Brad Beatty. Next, Counselor-elect Leslie Bean.
Hi. I'm proud to have my family here tonight, too. I have my parents Vernon, Catherine, Gabby. I have my mother-in-law Ruth Van Beem. And then I have my husband Trevor. And I have my only daughter Caitlin. And then I have Elijah, Jeremiah, Levi, Justice and Grayson. Those are all my sons, so.
Thank you, Counselor-elect Leslie Bean. Next, Counselor-elect Taylor Briscoe.
Thank you, and thank you again for giving me this opportunity to represent you. And now I'd like to thank the people that allow me to stand here today. I have my husband Colin Briscoe, with our son Bauer Briscoe, my mom Jillian Lambert and my dad Jim Cooper. So, thank you, and thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor-elect Briscoe. Now, Counselor-elect Jody Burbak.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to acknowledge my parents who are here, Bert and Toby Burbak, my son Jacob Tooling, and shout out to my two kids that couldn't be here, Jamie Tooling and Jonathan. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor-elect Jody Burbak. And now, Counselor-elect Bonnie Henderson.
Hi, everybody. I'd like to thank you for your support again this time. And I see many of my friends here, and I'm glad to see that you're able to make it out tonight. I'd like to thank my sister-in-law Gail and my brother-in-law Paul for coming, and my oldest son Todd and his girlfriend Esther. And special thanks to my partner of forty-four years for all her support, getting me ready to come here tonight and putting up with my nerves and everything over the last sixteen years she's been a godsend for help, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor-elect Bonnie Henderson. And next is Counselor-elect Mark Hunter.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here with the support of my wife Denise Whitehead, my father Doug Hunter and his partner Mitch Monahan, my sister Linda Mackenzie, and there are two other very close friends who are more like family than friends, and it's Sam and Lily and Wyatt. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor-elect Mark Hunter. Next, Counselor-elect Larry McCabe.
It's nice to see such a great crowd out tonight to celebrate democracy. I am here with the support of my lovely wife Vienna Mongealo. My daughter Violet McCabe is here. My son Isaac McCabe is not here, probably by choice. My daughter Aiden McCabe is in Ireland and will be here tonight. Unfortunately, my mother Marie McCabe is not capable of coming this evening, but I think of her right now. It's always good to have an Irish mother if you want to get anything done, because they won't allow you not to. And of course, acknowledge my father Larry McCabe for getting me a good two thousand votes because they thought that they were voting for him.
Thank you, Counselor-elect Larry McCabe, Jr. Counselor-elect Harjinder Nijer.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for everybody's support, and I do have my family in the audience. My wife, my rock Cheryl Niger, my daughter, one of my biggest supporters Sheena Niger, and we have two other family members, Zemren Paul Singh and Brenda Weeman. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor-elect Harjinder Nijer. Next, Counselor-elect Cody Seven.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I'd like to welcome my wife Caitlin, my mother Marlene, my sister Becky, my niece Bryn, my aunt Joan and my aunt Ruth, and everybody else for coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor-elect Cody Seven. And next, Counselor-elect Giza Ordopa.
Thank you. Thank you for all of you guys, speech advocates. Today I'm here. I don't believe when I met my wife Nicole in Moscow. From Moscow? Stratford? Thank you, Nicole. I'm really appreciative. Wonderful committee. I'm so happy. When I came, I'm just looking city hall. When I locked the door, Dan Matheson met me. Thank you, and never forget you. Thank you for all clerk officers who supporting us, calling, helping. How many words to say? Thank you for all of my guests with me. First, I'm starting here. Vladimir from Ukraine, Lataria. Vera from Senary. Blood, board member Steve LaBrisson. My wife Nicole, myself Erin. Grandfather Lord Percy is here. Percy Lord. Asrad, let go. All of friends. Thank you. It is a privilege to be here, to elected. I have no enemies. Thank you so much. I have to work. There's no time now to sit down. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Counselor-elect Giza Ordopa.
Thank you, members of council-elect. On behalf of the city, we would also like to thank your family members and friends, those who are able to be here with us this evening and those who are unable to attend. I would now like to welcome the Avon Public School Choir. After not competing since 2019, the choir won first place at the Ontario Music Festival Association Provincial Championship back in June, and placed first in Ontario for elementary schools across the province. Mark McIntosh is the choir director, and the Avon Public School Choir has taken first place a total of three times, and has also placed second three times since 2015. They have also placed second and third at the national level. Mr. McIntosh has stated that "it really is a privilege to be able to teach a group that loves to sing so much." I will now invite the Avon Public School Choir, led by Mark McIntosh, to perform the National Anthem, and I would once again ask you to rise as you are able. Please be seated. The municipal act authorizes that a person shall not take a seat on the council municipality until the person takes the declaration of office. As the clerk for the city of Stratford, it is my honour to administer the declarations. I will now invite Mayor-elect Ritzma to please rise and say the declaration of office before us now.
I, Martin Ritzma, having been elected to the office of mayor in the municipality of the city of Stratford, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interests, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III. I make this solemn promise and declaration consciously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Thank you, Mayor Ritzma. We will now begin the presentation of the chain of office, and before the official presentation, I would like to share the history of the chain. The city of Stratford chain of office was first worn by Mayor Wilfred Gregory and was presented on May 23, 1956, by his father, former mayor H.G. Gregory. In accepting the chain of office, Mayor Wilfred Gregory expressed his hope that future mayors of the city would wear this chain with honour, dignity and pride. With honour at having been elected, mayor combined with the recognition of the responsibility to serve impartially all citizens; with dignity befitting the office yet softened by humility in the knowledge of human frailty; with pride in our delightful fair city supported by strong determination to leave it more fair. Stratford's chain of office is composed of links of gold maple leaves with two swans and the dramatic masks of comedy and tragedy, while the pendant holds the city coat of arms with the locomotive. To add to the city's chain history and to recognise those who have come before, Mayor Matheson recently commissioned the inclusion of the names of all former mayors onto the back of the chain. We hope this tradition continues into the future. I would now like to invite former city of Stratford mayor Dan Matheson to present the chain of office to Mayor Ritzma. I would now like to invite all council-elect members to please rise, and I will ask each of you to repeat in unison the declaration of office before us now.
I, Brad Beatty. In unison. I, Patrick MacIntyre. Having been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of the city of Stratford, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or any improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interests, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III. And I make this solemn promise and declaration consciously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
May I present to you Mayor Ritzma, Counselor Beatty, Counselor Bean, Counselor Briscoe, Counselor Burbak, Counselor Henderson, Counselor Hunter, Counselor McCabe, Counselor Niger, Counselor Seven and Counselor Ordopa, representing the 2022-2026 Municipal Council for the city of Stratford. I will now invite the Avon Public School Choir to provide a musical presentation.
The piece we chose to sing tonight for you is called "Hands United in Peace."
Thank you. We will now receive greetings and communications and begin with a letter from Minister Steve Clark. Dear Mayor Ritzma and council, please accept my congratulations on your success in the recent municipal elections. I want to thank you for your decision to serve the public, and I look forward to working with you throughout the upcoming term. As a former mayor, he's saying this. I know firsthand just how important municipal government is to Ontarians. I also know your constituents expect local government to be effective and responsive as you deliver critical local services, and that you expect the same in our relationship. Throughout my term, time as Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, I have been proud to work with mayors and councils across Ontario to deliver on our shared priorities. I value the expertise and advice I have received from local governments, which has helped shape our decision-making to date. There is much work ahead of us. Our government is working hard to make living in Ontario more affordable. Bill 23, the More Homes Built Faster Act, takes bold action to advance our plan to address the housing crisis by building 1.5 million homes across Ontario over the next ten years. We will continue to work with all our municipal partners to get shovels in the ground and build more homes faster. As we work together to serve the people of our great province, I want to hear about the challenges we face. I know that local representatives understand their communities, and that you can help us ensure that local government is working harder, smarter and more efficiently. Best wishes to you and to council for success over the next four years. Sincerely, Steve Clark, Minister. The next remarks are from John Nader, MP for Perth Wellington. Good evening. As the Member of Parliament for Perth Wellington, I am pleased to be able to share a few words with you as part of the inaugural meeting of the 2022-2026 City of Stratford Council. It is truly wonderful this time, first meeting of the new council can be held in person, and I regret I am unable to join you due to parliamentary obligations in Ottawa. I would like to congratulate each of you as you're sworn into office and begin your term as a leader in municipality. As your federal representative, I believe all levels of government must work As your federal representative, I believe all levels of government must work together to serve the constituents of Perth Wellington and improve the quality of life for all. I look forward to working closely with council and our future discussions regarding the policies, issues, and projects that are important to the community. I wish everyone all the best as the municipality begins its next chapter. Sincerely, John Nader, MP Perth Wellington. And the third set of remarks which I will be reading this evening are from Matthew Ray, MP Perth Wellington. Dear Mayor Ritzma and council, my apologies for not being able to join you this evening, but commitments at Queen's Park prevent me from joining you. I want to begin by expressing my congratulations to all of you on your recent elections. It is a tremendous achievement, and you should be proud of yourselves. It takes a lot of courage, but one's name on a ballot. I know your family and friends are immensely proud of you. The job of a public servant is rarely easy, but it is deeply rewarding. Not everyone will agree with you, but I know you will always strive to do what's best for our communities. I also want to thank your families for sharing your time with us. No one can serve without support at home, so thank you again for sharing your loved one with our communities. I look forward to working with all of you over the next four years to continue to build Ontario together. As always, please do not hesitate to reach out to me or my office. Again, congratulations. I wish you all the best over the coming term. Sincerely, Matthew Ray, MP Perth Wellington. I will now invite forward Mayor Strathby to come to the podium to say a few words and to provide greetings on behalf of the town of St. Mary's.
Just a lovely ceremony tonight. It's my honour to bring greetings on behalf of the town of St. Mary's. First of all, I'd like to thank all the members of council for standing up and congratulating you on your election. We have a proud tradition of working with the city of Stratford, be it in policing, regional government issues, housing, social services, the list goes on and on. We're very thankful and grateful for the support and the tradition that's been built, and I encourage you and hope that you'll continue that tradition, and thank you for your support in the past. I'd also like to congratulate Mayor Rick Ritzma. Martin is a man of integrity, and I think the city of Stratford is very glad, you know, very glad to have him, and I think he'll do a great job, and we're very, very grateful to have someone that we know and that we can trust and work with from the town of St. Mary's. I was lucky enough last week, Martin attended my swearing-in ceremony in St. Mary's, and he's quite excited about tonight. He said, "You know, Al," he said, "we're gonna have a piper." I said, "Martin, that's great." He says, "I'm thinking about wearing a kilt." And I said to him, I said, "Martin, a Dutchman in the kilt? I don't think it's that kind of party." But in all seriousness, I, I think that Martin was trying to speak out and show how he wants his image to be projected, and in that manner, I brought myself, I brought him a little gift from the town of St. Mary's tonight. During the pandemic, we had a slogan, "Strong as stone," to promote our community to get through the pandemic. And we developed a mascot named Stony, actually, and when Martin visits St. Mary's, I'm gonna present him with this ball cap of Stony that hopefully he'll wear, so that he can be just like the cool kids in St. Mary's. Congratulations, Martin, and we look forward to it.
I will now invite Deputy Warden Eggers to come to the podium to say a few words and to provide greetings on behalf of the County of Perth.
Sorry, I'm a little short. It's so great to be here tonight. It's so wonderful to see so many people. I congratulate all of you. Thank you for putting your name forward. It's great to see so many ladies on council, because at the county, I'm the only lady. I can't say enough from the county, we love working with the city of Stratford. I really look forward to working with Martin. I've known Martin for a lot of years. He's a great man, and I'm sure he'll lead you wonderfully. So on behalf of the county, Warden Jim Aitchison, who was unable to come tonight, county and staff, council and staff, we, we bring you greetings and we wish you all the best. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Eggers. I would now like to invite forward Joan Thompson, Chief Administrative Officer for the city of Stratford.
It is my pleasure to introduce to this council your senior corporate and city leadership and staff present this evening. And so I would ask those present this evening to stand when your name is called. Carmen Kruger, Director of Corporate Services. David St. Louis, Director of Community Services. Kim McElroy, Director of Social Services. John Peridie, Fire Chief. Anne Kierkes, Director of Human Resources. Taylor Crinklaw, Director of Infrastructure and Development Services. Greg Skinner, Police Chief of Stratford Police Services. Joni Gerber, Chief Executive Officer of Invest Stratford. Peter Bolland, Administrator of Spruce Lodge Long-Term Care. Julia Merritt, Chief Executive Officer of Stratford Public Library. Zach Gribble, Executive Director of Destination Stratford. Dr. Miriam Clausen, Medical Officer of Health and Chief Executive Officer of Here in Perth Public Health. I'd also like to call on Charlene Weaver, Administrative Assistant to myself. Pat Shontz is our retired Administrative Assistant to Mayor. Smile has not left her face yet. Lindsay Van Gassel, who is taking over for the Administrative Assistant to Mayor and Council. Mike Byts, our Corporate Communications Lead. Kevin Bonnell, our Manager of Diversity, Equity, Indigenous Initiatives. We've already met Tatiana, so I'd like to recognise Chris Vantog, Deputy Clerk. Jody Akins and Lisa Francis from the Clerk's Office.
Thank you to our Chief Administrative Officer for introducing the directors and staff in attendance. It is now my honour to invite Mayor Ritzma forward to deliver the inaugural address.
Just hope this office doesn't get as heavy as this chain. Good evening, council members, city staff, invited guests, ladies and gentlemen, and yes, boys and girls. It's great, it's with great gratitude that I stand before you as mayor of the city of Stratford. This is certainly a privilege and an honour, and I am humbled to have the opportunity to serve as your mayor. In accepting the chain of office, I accept it on behalf of all the residents of Stratford. In wearing it, I know it comes with the responsibility to serve all residents. I pledge myself to this service. To the former mayor, Dan Matheson, and councillors, a huge thank you to you. Your commitment to the city and your work in the council chambers will be a big part of our work and direction moving forward. You have passed the torch on to the new council. Our responsibility is to not stand still with it, but to use it to shed light on the issues, to light the way for the work of our new council. I am so very proud to be part of this new team. We need to be ambitious in our work, build on our past and face the future with courage and optimism, create obtainable housing, rental and privately owned, to meet the needs of our current residents, and also for the newcomers coming to our community. Housing for homeless, young families, and those wishing to downsize. We need to continue to retain and attract residents to our community to address the labour challenges across all sectors of our local economy, training and retraining of workers to respond to our local labour needs, to respond to a current unemployment rate of 2.3%, the lowest in our province. Our work must include the protection of our environment within the development that must and will take place. We need to place an environmental lens on this development. We need to be respectful of the farmland, knowing that we live in the heart of the most productive agricultural region in the country. We need to continue our necessary work on equity and inclusion. Decisions that we need, that we make need to reflect the growing diversity in our community. A project that previous councils invested a great deal of time with is the former Grand Trunk Railway Shops. I believe that this past work and our continued work will bring this historic gem back to life and make it a centrepiece of our city, city's future. More immediate work will be that of our city's strategic plan and priorities and the city budget. I believe the truth about a city's aspiration isn't found in its vision, it's found in its budget. The budget will reflect what we value and how we embrace and support our strategic priorities, and it must be respectful of our taxpayers and fiscally responsible, having a watchful eye on city debt. All of this work will require collaboration with council and city staff, and as Gandhi stated, "Where honest disagreement is a good sign of progress." The city of Stratford is truly blessed with a team of caring, committed, and talented staff, an amazing team led by an exceptional CAO. We need to be committed to respectful dialogue and work with our city staff. Personally, I am committed to, to work and to, and to look forward to working with local municipal councils, with St. Mary's Mayor Al Strathby, the County of Perth Warden Jim Aitchison, and Deputy Warden Rhonda Eggers, our MPP Matthew Ray and the provincial government, and our MP, John Nader and the federal government. This for the betterment of our community and all those across Perth County, ensuring the necessary financial commitments to support city infrastructure and the daily services of our residents. I commit to servant leadership that engages the community with open communication, to preserve the safety and security of residents and businesses, to be accountable for decisions made by council and the CAO's office, and to monitor and to, and to report to our residents. In closing, I am proud to be a mayor of a city which celebrates and advocates for the arts and industry, a community where all are valued and where residents are measured only by the size of your heart and the kindness that you share. I believe that in the city of Stratford, there is always much more to unite us than to divide us. Let's work together, let's walk together, let's build a future together in this beautiful home called Stratford. I wish again to thank the residents of Stratford for this honour. Thank you to my family for their love and support, especially my wife Katra for her love, wisdom, and guidance, and perhaps I should add patience. Thank you very much.
I'll actually call you to the podium as well right now, so we'll begin item 12 on the agenda, which is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest, and if so, please state the general nature thereof.
See, none.
Item 13 is reading up the bylaws, and there is one bylaw listed for consideration being the confirmatory bylaw. This bylaw requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
So may I have a mover for the first and second time of 11.1? Moved by Councillor Stevan, seconded by Councillor Henderson. All in favour? Opposed of any, and that's carried. And a motion for bylaw 11.1 to be read third and final time. Motion by Giza, Ordopa, seconded by Jody Burbach, Councillor Burbach. All in favour? Opposed of any, and that's carried.
And your worship, the final item of business is a motion to adjourn?
And if I may, through the clerk, before I take a motion to adjourn on behalf of all present here tonight, I'd like to thank our, our city clerk, Mr. Fo, and the staff for this exceptional celebration, and the, the attention to every detail, right down to the coat hangers in the hallway. So having said that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Councillor Beatty, seconded by Councillor McCabe, all in favour? Opposed of any, and we are adjourned.